And welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I am Coach Ashley. Today, we are joined by founders of Get Oiling Greg and Amanda Kilwai. Hey, guys.
Hello.
Everybody.
We also have Julie from our superstar team. What's up, Julie?
Hello.
Hi. And you guys, surprise, today you are getting trained by someone incredible that you may or may not know, but you're gonna want to know her really well by the time we are done today. And there's some really cool ways you get to do that. But without further ado, I have Christina from the Engagement Source here. Hi, Christina.
Hey, I'm so glad to be here.
We're so thrilled to have you. We have, we've wanted to invite you on to come hang out with us for a long time now. And so we're just so thrilled that we're finally able to make this happen. And today, we're going to be talking, you guys, about how to follow up and what it means to actually follow up the right way and without follow up feeling weird. So we're going to be getting into, into what that is today, but some real quick housekeeping, everybody. This is a live work session that we host every single Thursday at noon Eastern. And it's a time for you to come and be a part of a community that's growing and learning together. You'll learn new things here every week. We also will help you to get more out of your Get Oiling account. If you're a member with us, and if you don't have Get Oiling, you can get started for your first month for just a dollar at getoiling.com. And actually, oh, here, double surprise day. We've actually just launched our convention specials early. So there's a whole lot of stuff you'll get when you sign up for your new account with Get Oiling for a dollar for your first month. So definitely head over to getoiling.com to check that out. And of course, if you're here and you are looking for help and support, that is what this call is for. All right. So we do reserve space to help you at the close of the call. So if you have questions, definitely head over to the Q and A here live and ask them. If you want to join a call like this in the future, you can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession to be on the email list, be the first to know and to get resources that we send out. You know, about what trainings are coming up and all that kind of good stuff and get our replays. And then finally, if you want to work together on a live call, if you need help with something that you're working on, you want hands-on help on a live call, some coaching, or you know, tech, or whatever it might be that you need, that is getoiling.com/web site review, all one word. Now, let's get over into the chat real quick. I want to know where you guys are coming in from. Do you guys know who Christina is? Does anybody know? You know, the Engagement Source. I want you to let us know in the comment. I know there's going to be some of you guys who did not know this was happening. We're going to be very excited. So, all right, we've got Kansas City and Wisconsin. Of course, here on the call, we've got Virginia, Florida, New York, North Dakota, Panama, Colorado, Maine today. Where are you otherwise, Heather? More New York, North Carolina, Florida, Missouri, Texas. Love you guys. What's up, Arizona? Hey, we've got people here from all over the world. And today, we're going to talk about how you can follow up and grow your business with following up smart. And I'm going to switch over to speaker view because we want to hear from Christina. So I guess just to open things up, Christina, can you tell us a little bit about you? Obviously, you're a Young Living brand partner.
Sure, absolutely. So, and I see a couple familiar names in the chat. So, so excited to be here. Yeah, so I started out as a brand partner, just like many of us did. And I learned really quickly that systems was gonna make running a Young Living business actually feasible. When I first joined Young Living and started dabbling in the business, I was like a brand new mom, like was nursing my second little girl on the couch. And so I was like, I, I see the vision, but how do we actually make this work? How do I take care of my people? I will tell you, I am an Enneagram two. And so that was probably like always my first thought is if someone fell through the cracks or I forgot to follow up with a customer, that was like, oh, my gosh, I'm not doing this right. This is not working. And so that's when I really dove into texting. It was something I could do text marketing for my customers as a way to communicate, keep everything in one place. I was feeling really stressed out having Facebook messages and a Facebook group and emails and texts to my real phone number. And I was trying to keep track of where everything was. And so pulling it all into one place really changed for me. And then we started, I started offering it to frankly, my upline. She asked me, hey, I've heard you're, you're really good at creating text content. Would you like to help me? And then that kind of spiraled into the Engagement Source. We started offering it and I frankly, never really anticipated it was going to become what it is today. But I've really loved doing it. We love creating content, not just for content sake, but content that's impactful. My methodology is less is more that. So that's why I thought it was great that you guys invited me to this call today, actually, because one thing that we really try and communicate to our members is we don't always just have to have content for content sake, that if we can reuse and repurpose and repackage this awesome content that we've created and serve it up in multiple ways, in multiple different communication styles, you're actually going to have a greater impact that way than just constantly talking about five different topics. You know, I think for a long time, we've all kind of been in this mindset that like, we have to just keep sending out different things because we never know what someone's going to be interested in, which isn't wrong. But when we have such a wide breadth of content and such a wide, frankly, product line that is so extensive, so many prospects just get like bamboozled by the sheer volume of it all that they'd never actually take action. So when we can really tailor that in and come up with, you know, our core products that we really are, can easily talk about, create some really good content around those products and just reuse those systems month and month again, then now your leads, they know what you love. They are excited to talk with you about those products. You're excited to share about them because you probably have testimonies about them and they're more, so much more likely to buy. And so, so our, our mission at the Engagement Source is to just equip you with that content so you can just focus on your passion of sharing those core products that you know and love.
That's so awesome. So can you tell us a little bit about, I mean, especially for, for those of you who are here today, who are moms in that similar situation to where Christina was. So Christina, what, what does it look like? When you're thinking about following up with somebody who maybe for instance, because I sent this out in the email, right? Just to kind of back up a little bit, how many of us knew that it can take an average of eight touches for someone to say yes? Did you know that? Have you heard that before? Maybe a better question. How many of us have, for all of the people that we have shared Young Living with, how many of us have actually reached out to offer eight times or more with all of them? Have we? Have we really done it? Most of us have not. So what does that look like, Christina? Like when, when you're, you know, in that busy place, obviously, you want to be sensitive to the people that you're reaching out to. You don't want to be, you know, bombarding them with anything or feeling pushy. What kind of message do you send?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. And I think, I think there's a balance is now with such, with social media becoming such an influence. I think it's not to say that social media can't be one of those eight touches. It certainly can be, but it shouldn't be your only touch communication strategy because there's such a difference. And this is where we've really tried to teach people is like, social media can definitely be kind of those, you know, key, I want to call like drawing them in. But then the more you learn like, okay, these are this lead, you know, this prospect, we'll just say Suzie for an example. Once we know what her actual needs are, let's personally touch her as many times as we can in an authentic way. So that could be an email saying, hey, you know, this is on sale, or this just popped up in my mind. I thought of you this morning, just wanted to touch base. Could be a text message. It could be inviting her to an event where you're going to meet her needs. So I think social media definitely can be one way, but the more we can use those email and text communications in that really authentic way, because that's what makes network marketing a different business model. They're not just going to get the same marketing email five times a week from a large company just saying sale, sale, sale. The idea is that we're taking that more personal touch. They feel like there is a person in their corner that is connecting them with the right products and not just shouting at them constantly. And so we try and really equip people, equip our members with those, with that verbiage, with that content and helping them to say, you know, and people ask me all the time, like, how have you gotten so good at writing content? And I've just said, like, I just ask myself every piece of content I write, like, would I want to receive this? Would this feel genuine coming from somebody else? How, how would I receive this? Would I read this? Is it too long? Is it too short? You know, just asking yourself those questions. How, how would I receive this? And would I find this to be genuine and authentic? And that's where, when you're on touch five, six, seven, the more authentic it is, the more likely they are to take action.
Absolutely. And you know, one of the things that I see more often than not, and I think this is probably a reason for most of us. Obviously, there's, there's two main ones. Number one, what on earth do we say, right? I don't want to feel awkward. I don't want to feel weird. I don't want to feel salesy. I don't want to chase people, right? So that's number one reason, right? How many of you guys can relate to that? Number one reason, like, this is why I'm probably not following up with everybody is like, eh, what, but what, how, how do I do that? What do I say? Right? And for those of us who are a little more comfortable with it, or we've been bold and we're going to do it, we're not keeping up. We're not actually tracking what we're doing. So I want to encourage you, if you're here today, most of us who are here today are Get Oiling members. If you have a Good Oil account, and this is, this is going to work for all of our accounts, whether you're getting like the, you know, the what $7 a month starter plan, seed plan that we have all the way up through all the plans we have, it's built around a contact manager, right? Once you've reached out to someone, make sure you have a reminder to follow up on the next call, right? But then, when it's time to actually have something to say, you don't have to always know exactly what you're going to send because we have content partners, right? We at Get Oiling have resources that say the things for you. How many of you guys have used Plug and Play Content in Good Oil? Like, if you're here, you just click the little thing and it comes straight into your account, right? Oh, and Jackie, who is the queen of follow-up, says, use the to-do list to help you follow up in a timely fashion. You can create to-dos on your contacts, right? Definitely start doing that. But yeah, Christina, let's talk about the content you make because we have a really exciting announcement to share with you guys here today.
So, well, and I, just before we, we circle back, I just saw Nicole's comment, which is I think how everybody feels when they first start, is she said, that's exactly how I feel. I feel super salesy and weird and awkward. And so the point of the touches, you know, philosophy is you're not asking for the sale every time someone, you're touching someone. That touch could simply be, hey, you came to my mind this morning and I was thinking about you. Just wanted to, to check in, like, how's your family doing? Sometimes it's, hey, I'm having an awesome oily event at my house on Saturday and I'd love to see you. Those touches don't always have to be like, hey, we talked about sulfur zyme two months ago. Did you buy it yet? You know, we're not chasing people in that way. Every single touch doesn't have to be, we're asking them for a sale. And that's where the more you're in their life in a personal way, that when you do come to them and say, hey, I really think this one piece, this one product would really make a huge shift in your health. What do you think about adding this to your cart today? Then they're going to be so much more receptive. And they're, because you've built that trust. And so try and take that awkward salesy piece out of it and just treat your customers as loyal friends that you genuinely care about. And you want to connect them with the right products. And so, and that's part of where the more that, you know, relying on content creators like us can help make that so much more seamless so that when they are ready to make a purchase, or you are trying to just find more leads on social media or in your everyday life, you have that content at your disposal to say, instead of you having to spend that time educating them on particular products or on different topics that you think relate to their life, you just have that content already ready to go. It just takes a couple of clicks to connect them with that resources. And then, and then we really focus on, especially with our mini-series content or our education bundles, you know, giving them that, that call to action at the end to, to take some of that burden off of you and more onto that person of like, hey, here's where we've talked about all the amazing things with a particular product or a topic. Here's what we really recommend. Are you ready to add this to your cart? Or are you ready to add this to your loyalty order? That's where, we're, we're adept at that part. So then all you're doing is following up, like Jaclyn said, you're just making that to-do list to just continue to follow up and, and be present in that person's life. And sometimes it does take more than eight. I think I saw someone else make a comment, sometimes it takes more than eight touches. I had one customer on my team who, it took her the better part of probably two or three years to actually buy something. And that happens 100%. And so that's where, you know, just keep at it. I thought what you said in that, in your email, advertising today's work session actually was really good because we don't always have to continual, of course, we need to be adding more people to our funnel, but there's so many people still in our funnel swirling around at the top that haven't made it through the funnel. Obviously, not everybody's gonna, gonna get to that by the, the last piece where we want them to actually join our team. But so many more people that we've already been touching and nurturing, we just kind of, they just fall off our radar. They just fall to the wayside when those are still very active, warm leads that just might need a little bit more nurturing.
Yeah, I think there's, there's a really important way to look at this, right? Like, and it's especially important for those of us who are using social media and you're interacting with people in this more sort of shallow environment, right? Where eight touches is not, hey, I tapped on your shoulder and said hello eight times, right? This could be 20 conversations, right? And one, two, four of them might lead towards you being like, hey, you know what? I, I think I have something that'll help you because you have to do the work in the conversations, right? To, to move them to that point where they're actually ready to open to hearing about something that could solve a problem. And if you are keeping up with those conversations in your contact manager, right? So putting a note in, I, discussion on Facebook Messenger today, or you know, Instagram, or on the phone, or text, or whatever, talked about XYZ thing. I'm not going to jump on it right away, but tomorrow, next day, I'm going to be like, hey, I'm going to make myself a to-do and I'm going to reach out and be like, hey, you know, I was thinking about the conversation we had because you never want to pounce, right? I was thinking about that conversation we had that the other day. If, would you be open to checking out a thing that might be helpful to you? Let them say yes. And that is an ask, right? Show them the thing and now you did it, right? That's, it takes time, right?
Yep, yep, absolutely. And I think Nicole just made one more comment about vendor events that, I mean, those, those are, that's a tricky audience, Nicole, and certainly vendor events and those. I mean, that really is cold leads that you're gathering at events like that. And so I just say, like, try and engage them with open-ended questions. And you can, and I tell people, like, acknowledge the elephant in the rooms, you know? Tell that person, send out a text or an email and say, hey, I know we really don't know each other that well. Like, I know we just met and I promise you might think I'm just this salesy person, but I really genuinely would like to help you if there's something with essential oils that has piqued your interest. I, I, I find that so much more effective than trying to, you know, sell them or, you know, it's like, I tell people, just like, be a human. Tell them, hey, I know you really don't know me. This is, you know, my heart and I hope that we can make a connection. Is there something that, you know, you've been thinking about? Is there a health issue that you're really dealing with? Is there something about essential oils that you don't understand? We'll always say, I always tell people, leave it an open-ended question and make sure it's not a yes or no answer. And, and I think that helps with that really tricky cold market that sometimes we can get from vendor events.
Yeah, Jackie's actually got some great advice here in the chat as well. If you're using your Get Oiling system, if you're going to do a vendor event, and this is more for the future, obviously, we've, everybody here, it's done a vendor event, has a legal pad or, you know, sticky notes or something full of names that we've never reached out to, right? Or that maybe we did, but then, you know, they didn't answer. But what Jackie's suggesting is that you set up like a tablet or a computer or something like that, or even have a landing page and use like a QR code maker online that goes to that landing page and have them tag themselves by checking, you know, I'm interested in, you know, nutrition. I'm interested in weight loss. I'm interested in self-care. I'm interested in dogs and babies or whatever. Because that's going to actually help you not only follow up with them, just, you know, to be able to say, you know, hey, let's start a conversation, but it's going to help you find the best content to send to them, right?
Yeah, absolutely. And that's, you know, basically, that's what most marketers, that's what they would call segments. You're segmenting your audience. And so it just helps you to have a baseline of what you want to, you know, how you want to interact with that person. And then it gives you that open-ended conversation. And hey, Mary Lou, I see that you said not that tech savvy. That does not mean you have to create that landing page. You could make little slips of paper. I mean, I'll be honest, when I started, when I first started my Young Living business and doing oily events, that's what I did. I had like little half-sheets of paper with checkboxes and then I would go back. So don't, don't let the tech stop you because there's still ways you can import, you know, and manually enter that data in your Get Oiling account to still be able to follow up with them later.
Oh, and one thing real quick as well, don't know if you know this, Mary Lou, but when you sign up for Get Oiling, there's a pre-built website that's already made that you can use. And there's a pre-written campaign that actually has these checkboxes in it. So it'll give them when they sign up, if you use the new prospects, it's called new prospects campaign. When they sign up for that campaign, it's going to give them a quick little freebie and then it's going to ask them to actually like come over here and check the things they're interested in. And you're already going to, you're going to get those answers via email when that person fills it out. So some of this stuff is actually already made for you inside of Get Oiling. But what the, the tricky piece is, is, you know, for everybody that we touch, right? And if the initial touch, is there a stranger at a vendor event? That's going to take 10 times more outreach typically than a good friend, right? But you have to keep following those connection pieces with them in those conversations to hopefully get to a point where you see a problem that you can provide an opportunity to solve. And that's where like the average of eight, right? We need that thing to happen a bunch of times. So Christina, what kind of stuff do you send when you're following up? Like, what does that look like for you? I mean, is it, is it like, you know, one piece of content, is it a drip? Like, what, what does that look like when you're doing your follow-up?
I think it depends. I think for more of those cold leads, people you really don't know and you're just trying to get that baseline conversation going, I think creating some drip content isn't a bad thing because a lot of chances are they're not going to always respond. They're just going to ignore your text messages. Sometimes that's going to happen. And so, so sometimes automating, you know, it depends on how hands-on you want to be with your, your lead nurturing. So if you kind of want to set it and forget it, I think creating those drip campaigns with some big, kind of bigger chunks in between messages. You know, we've created a piece of content called the 90 Day Funnel, which is kind of like our, our onboarding system. And all it is, is basically a timeline with kind of some bigger chunks. So whenever we create a campaign, a lot of times we'll just say, day one, two, three, four, five. But you can say day one, day 15, day 25, day 34, you know? It can have those bigger chunks that feel more natural to the end user. It feels like, hey, you know, this person is following up with me, but really you've just automated your follow-up. So for that kind of vendor event, I think that can be really helpful. Whereas with someone you personally know, you might want to be a little bit more, you know, you're going to have that personal relationship with them. That might be some more one-on-one messaging because the more tailored down you can be, the more effective it can be, in my opinion. So I think it's kind of a blend of both, honestly.
For sure, for sure. So we've been talking about it a little bit here and there, but can you, can you tell us about the Engagement Source?
Yeah, absolutely. So, so we offer text and now email, thanks to Get Oiling. For a long time, we, I have been purely text marketing content for Young Living Brand Partners. And so, so we create impactful content that essentially sounds like what you would write. We work really hard. I work really hard to create content that takes as little effort from you as possible, but sounds really genuine and as short and sweet as possible. So we've really cultivated the art of copywriting in short form. So we want to deliver bite-sized chunks instead of big, big brain dumps. And so that's a, that's a shift where we've helped our members see that sometimes for the average busy customer that you're going to be talking to today, your leads that you're talking to today, they don't always have the bandwidth to sit down and digest, you know, a huge blog post or an hour Zoom call all about a specific issue, health issue, a product. But if you can deliver it in smaller digestible chunks, they, it's more likely going to, you know, meet them where they are. They can see it a little bit more clearly. They can feel like it's relatable to their life. And it's a, just, it's much more effective. You know, our goal is that you send out one of our topic series or you send out some of our text messages and that you'll actually not only get engagement back from that person, but that they'll actually take action, that they will purchase something or they will add something to their loyalty orders. Because otherwise, we're just communicating for communicating sake, you know? We want to make sure that they're actually seeing positive results from using Young Living products. I mean, at the end of the day, that's a, that's a Bob Heilig, if you guys ever watch or listen to Bob Heilig. I love that shift he made where he said, you know, our primary focus is that they, you know, your, every single customer on your team should have some positive result from a product they have used from Young Living in their first 30-ish days. And so when we create content, that is always my goal, is like, we need to connect them with the right product and make sure they're having a positive result because they're much less likely to leave after that point. If they're getting positive results, they're seeing health changes in their life. You know, just like all of us that are now brand partners, that's basically why we're all here is Young Living, we didn't have just one positive result. We saw many, many positive results, fell in love with the products and said, okay, I want to share this with those around me and make this a viable business for my family. And so, so that's really our, our main focus is we want to give them the right content that is easy for them to consume. And so what that looks like on a monthly basis from us is we create a beautiful newsletter. So we just rolled out our very first Get Oiling newsletter and I'm really happy with the way it turned out. So that's something that you can send on the first of the month that shares about the promos, but also gives them some other fun recipes and downloads and shares some events you might be having. We also provide weekly oily tips content. So that's something we've done from, I feel like day one is everybody loves sending weekly oily tips. And so we really try hard to make our weekly oily tips content a little bit different in that we want to give them a tip, but we also want to engage with them and make it feel really personal. We share a lot of testimonies in our weekly oily tips. We try and share stories. We say, hey, I just tried this. I think you should too. So, so our weekly tips content is, is something I personally really value. And I think that can be just a really good piece to implement if you're just getting started. It's a very easy win with your customers who are looking for that kind of content. And then finally, our third piece of content that we deliver monthly is what we call our mini-series content or our education bundle. And that is an email and text campaign where, where we can, yeah, actually, you are exactly right. Ashley just said, hey, can we show and tell? Absolutely. That's a great question. It's so much easier for me to show you our mini-series because that's something we have really worked hard on is, I used to create these much bigger, full breadth topics. And then I realized, we call it a mini-series and we make it much more digestible. It's so much more impactful. So let me actually show you what is inside, what we just created for this month of June, all about sulfur zyme, which we've gotten some really good feedback on. We'll type for just a second. Right? Okay, can you guys see this? Okay? All right, awesome. So when you, when you join the Engagement Source membership, one of our kind of bread and butter pieces of content is what we, what I was just talking about, our mini-series. This month, we talked all about sulfur zyme because I think it's a really critical product that can really help a lot of people, no matter whether you're a busy mom or you're an active older folks. I think it covers a big, wide range of our customer base. And so what this looks like now is, so for the longest time, I've only been able to do text, but now we can actually provide both email and text messaging so that you can pick and choose what's better for you. Some people like incorporating two-way texting into their marketing platform, but some people prefer to just do email. It saves you on marketing credits, I know, so that's. It saves you on marketing credits. I know. So that's a thing I hear a lot is Christina, help me save. I'm spending so, I'm doing so many credits because your content is so awesome, but what do I do? And so this allows you to have, to have that. So when you import our content, this is what it's going to look like. All of this is done for you. And so this is that confirmation, confirmation message. So you'll see, if you've been with me for a while, if anybody is in the chat that's already a member with me, you know, I like to add a lot of gifts. I just think they're fun. So we created as an email series or as a text so that you can pick and choose what's better for you. Or your customers can pick and choose what their preference is. So typically we've got about five messages here that are kind of, we're breaking down sulfur zyme, why you need it, what is the difference? What is that Young Living difference? What is the key ingredient? How is it going to help us? And then this is kind of that closing, like I say, the kick in the pants at the end of the campaign where we're really giving them that inside look at how does this actually look in my daily routine? Pointing them to a couple of other products that would complement sulfur zyme, especially when we're just talking about one particular product. We like to pair it in a bundle with a couple of other products so that if they are new, if you are using this with your leads, they're going to hit that 100 PV mark hopefully, um, or you're at least going to get close. And so we like to pair them with a couple of other products and then just come right out and ask them, are you ready to add this supplement to your routine? Add this to your subscription order to get your loyalty points. You know, the more we can talk about the loyalty rewards program, the better off we are. And so all of this is done for you. We also get, give you that saved reply so that you don't have to, it takes literally all of the guesswork out of what to say, how to introduce this content. We want to invite and your customers to learn about this. And sometimes it's hard to know, like, how do I just ask them, do you want to learn about sulfur zyme? That sounds really weird. And so that's my job is to help make this super approachable. To let them know. And sometimes I really just say, hey, I'd really just love to chat with you about this because I think sulfur zyme is awesome. And I think you probably need it because almost all of us need it. And kind of giving them some little, some little hooks to intrigue their interest and let them know, hey, I really think this can change your life. Can I send this to you? So all of this is done for you. And so we package this in a way that we really want you to be able to use this both as an education focus for your customers and to talk about sulfur zyme and other products that go really well with sulfur zyme throughout the entire month. But also to be able to use this with your leads. It's also very friendly to use as an opt-in on social media or as just other ways, if you've got leads already in your Get Oilin account, this could simply be an email that you send them, hey, I just really would love to talk with you about this. Is this something that is striking, you know, that hits home for you? Um, and so that's just another way that you can touch in on those leads and say, hey, this is something I'd like to talk with you about and see what their reaction is. So, um, so let me back out because I saw a couple of questions. Hold on one second. Here. So does that help kind of give you, um, a flavor? Hold on one second.
There we go. And so it's definitely some people who are really excited to see that you have your content with Get Oilin now. I think a lot of folks have used you with Project Broadcast before, right?
Yes, exactly. So for the longest time I've been with Project Broadcast and we still have lots of Project Broadcast content. But we're really excited to add Get Oilin. I got several emails yesterday saying, I've been waiting so many years for this. Thank you. We had one member who was with us for a long time and switched over to Get Oilin and she sent me some couple of messages yesterday. So we're just really excited that we finally made this jump. So.
Awesome. All right. So let's talk a little bit more about details. If you guys have questions for Christina, please do go ahead and ask away. So it looks like what you have right now, and I think, um, do you have maybe the page up where they could go and, and see what's next? Uh, sort of if, if they wanted to give your content a spin. I, I will say this, you guys, uh, on our partners page, you will now find the engagement source. And so that's on the Good Oilin homepage. Look for partners. Uh, and that's where you can go and see all of the content creators who have partnered with us to make this, this content plug and play on our platform. So basically what happens is you pick one of the content providers or more, actually, most people use more than one content provider. Uh, and, and you actually select that and they actually give you resource bundles. Uh, so if you're not familiar with what that is, basically all it is, is a way for you to click two things. They're really easy to click. And then all of a sudden you have Christina's words written for you in your inbox, ready to send to your people, right?
Yes, yes. And that's definitely our goal always. Um, you know, we've been approached by other platforms and I've gotten requests to make content for other email marketing platforms. And, you know, over and again, I have told people, hey, if I can't do 90% of the work for you, that's not a good platform for me to be on. Um, that's not actually helping you. That's, yeah, maybe I'm giving you the content, but there's still so much work on your plate that you have to do. That's not what our business is about. We want to be serving you, making all the connections so that if you, if tech scares you or if you're, you know, and feel like you're not super technologically savvy, that's okay because we're making those connections. We're making sure the right keywords are in place so that you can send out that content in full confidence that it's going to work, that your customers are going to get what you wanted. Um, and we offer, just like Get Oilin, sounds like they offer lots of one-on-one support. So do we. So I always have time on my calendar every, every week. And that's where, um, that's a big perk of being part of our membership is I have become sort of a quasi, uh, you know, tech support for Project Broadcast. And now for Get Oilin so that I'm just another line of defense. So if there is a tech issue you're running into, especially with our content, we will absolutely, I'll jump on Zoom with you and, and we'll walk through those issues so that you can make sure everything, you know, feel confident that everything's running smoothly.
Beautiful, beautiful. Let me see if we've got anything else in the questions here. So, um, let me see. Do make sure you guys are pretty pleased to put your questions in the Q and A so that we don't miss them. So right now, uh, let's talk a little bit about what people get when they sign up for the Engagement Source, just so that we're super clear. Do you want me to screen share or would you prefer?
Yeah, I'm happy to walk them through it. And I will say, um, we're actually, um, we're on a membership platform. And so when you join the Engagement Source, you'll get access to what we're calling our Get Oilin Content Library. Let me actually pull that up really quickly. So that you can actually see, just like Ashley said, how easy it is to just click two buttons and then you're good to go. So let me open up our content library here. So when you, uh, join our membership, it's $15 a month to get access to our Get Oilin Content Library. And this is what you'll see. This will be kind of your home base for grabbing all of your content. Um, and so you'll see, we've got here waiting for you, our June newsletter, our little diffuser blends calendar, that's just kind of a fun freebie that we offer every month. We include it in the newsletter. Like I mentioned, those weekly tips content for customers as well as our sulfur zyme mini-series is what we've got for June. I'm also always providing lots of content for conventions. So if you're wondering, convention is always a biggie on my plate when, uh, convention rolls around. So more than likely we'll have a beautiful shopping landing page for the new products that are coming out. Usually that Thursday during convention and that will also be available to you to import and send out to your team. Um, and just to kind of give you an idea, we always, um, provide you with written instructions. We create all of our graphics in Canva so that you're able to import those graphics into your own Canva account. If you, if you're a person who likes to have branded comp graphics, or if you want to make a tweak to it, we always provide you with the template links. We're going to give you very clear instructions as well as a tutorial training video that's going to show you exactly how to import this content into your Get Oilin account, how to make edits, if that's something that you desire, if you want to personalize your content. And then how to get that sent out to your customers. And usually these are five to 10 minute max videos. So you can get this up and running in literally 10 to 15 minutes and be on with your other IPAs that you need to get done. And like Ashley mentioned, you're just going to click here to claim your, uh, resource bundle. And then import everything that you need for getting this started. So like I mentioned, we have the campaign itself, that saved reply and some automations to connect them to the right email campaign.
Awesome. I love it. So you guys, uh, if you would like to, uh, hop in and start using the Engagement Source's content, I really recommend like, even if you're using other content providers, this is someone's voice who's speaking on your behalf and you're not always going to find perfect congruency. Or maybe you like one thing from one provider and another from another. Uh, but this is just such a great deal. It's a great offer. Christina's an incredible writer and you guys, how long have you been creating content? For, for Young Living?
For about three years now. So we've learned a lot, that's for sure.
Yeah. So, uh, you know, she's been working with leaders at all levels and, uh, really speaking on their behalf to their customers. So that's something that you can take advantage of as well. And that's at theengagementsource.com. No spaces or anything in between, right? Just all one word.
Exactly. It looks like Greg already dropped it in the chat for me. So thanks, Greg. Yep, you can go right over there. And one thing that we always, you know, try and do is, um, take your feedback and make adjustments. You can talk to some of our current members and know that we have done all kinds of different things for the promos on the first of the month. We have done campaigns, we've done landing pages, we've, um, done just about everything. And so I really value your feedback as brand partners that are really on the ground using this content. And so I'm very available. It's not like you're just another number in a membership where you never really get to talk to that person. I am available via text or email. So if you have a question, even after the call wraps up today, you can email us just at hello at theengagementsource.com. Or you can text me at 757-296-8137. I'll drop that information into the chat. So if you've got a question after today's call, um, don't be a stranger. I answer questions all the time.
I love it. Awesome. So you are more than welcome to stick around. Thank you so much for being here today and for sharing this. We're excited to be working with you and to see your content come into our platform, serving this amazing community. We are going to move over to Q and A. Of course, if there's anything that you want to grab that you see come up, you know, especially if it's directed at you, feel free, pop right in. Uh, or if you've got to go, that's totally fine as well. Thank you again so, so much.
Thank you, Ashley. And yeah, I can definitely stick around for some Q and A.
All right, perfect. So, uh, there were two, I've, uh, I'm going to go ahead and bring you out, Rhonda. Let's chat real quick. Uh, I think it looks like you're, you've taken a step back and you're wanting to, uh, to come back in. So, let's, let's talk. I hear you. A lot of us kind of had to pump the brakes a little bit. So, uh, hi, how are you?
I'm good.
Wonderful. So, um, yeah, tell me a little bit about where you're at. I know you're, you're, you know, basically saying you're interested in maybe starting over with Get Oilin. Tell me about how you want to be showing up in your business, what you want to be doing.
Well, yeah, we, you know, just with everything that's gone on, we kind of took a step back, like I think a lot of people have. And so it's now trying to restart from where we're at. We've lost a lot of ground, um, on our business and our, our members. So we do have that base of people we can touch again. But it's how to do it in a better way than we've done it in the past. I feel we've, I've done a lot with my website, but it's just been here and there. And I know like Greg reached out to me recently and I just saw his message and responded to him. So it's, it's kind of how to start again with where we're at and, and move forward in a better way in teaching people about it, not salesy, right? Not you need this product, but it's why you need.
Right. Yeah. So I think one of the benefits of having, um, a membership to a content partner, like what Christina has with the Engagement Source, is that you have, um, the ability to sort of archive a huge body of educational content. And you know, if you have, for instance, if you're using campaigns, which are great, and you should use them as a way to keep people engaged and to send things out, but you can also repurpose content. So I would encourage if, if your, if your heart is really on, um, on educating, we know that not everybody's paying attention all the time. Take advantage of, um, of this, a pre-written educational, well-researched content, compliant content. Um, send that out and do that as a practice on a monthly basis. But then take the content that's used there and add it to lessons inside of a vault in your member area, right? So the, the content that you learn from the sulfur zyme campaign, you can have a whole little mini-series that your people into the future can use to learn specifically about sulfur zyme. Um, and, and I'll say this as well, this is, um, you know, we obviously work with other content partners like Grow Workspace, for instance. The Engagement Source creates a completely different, it's a different voice, right, around what Grow Workspace does. Grow Workspace makes sways, for instance. Whereas, um, you're actually going to see more written content that could also be maybe put into blog post format. So there's a lot of ways, specifically from what Christina does, a lot of hers is copy. And so that stuff that you could be using for a lot of different purposes. So what, what I would say is this, yeah, go ahead.
I am a Grow Workspace, uh, member. Um, so there is a lot of great content there. Now with this, um, type of content that, um, like, how compliant is it for us here in Canada is always my question. You know, we have to, we're, we're getting, you know, a lot of, of conduct coming down on us here in Canada. So we have to be very, very careful and it is so different than the US, um, in what we can say.
Jumping right there, Ashley, if you want.
Please, please go right ahead.
Yeah. So Rhonda, we've been creating Canadian content for, I'd say probably a year now. And I 100% agree with you that the Canadian market struggles because there's not a lot of content, a lot of it. Canadian content, Canadian product line is very different. And so I am, I am US-based, so I cannot guarantee you it's always 100%, but we try and do a really good job. I work with an RCD in Canada who, um, who really, you know, gives me feedback. We always try to provide the right graphic silos, you know, making sure we're using, um, Canadian graphics. Cause I know that was a big deal for a while. Really need to make sure we're using, um, that NFR labeling when it's appropriate. So we try to do our best with Canadian content to make sure that it is compliant for you. But just to kind of circle back to your kind of original, you know, like here we are, we want to restart. We don't really know what to do. I think everything actually suggests it's really solid. Um, but I actually just had a Zoom call, a support call with a member who, she just had a lot of life stuff happen. She had one of her parents pass away. She had a child who was, who had surgery. She literally just like had to hit pause for about six months. And she came to me with this very same dilemma of like, I don't know how to restart. And, um, I usually say like, just rip the Band-Aid off. I think that can sometimes be the hardest part. And so we helped her create some texts and some emails where we literally, kind of like what I was mentioning earlier, just kind of acknowledged, hey, and, and we said, hey, we really appreciate your loyalty. Like, thank you for being a valued customer. I think a lot of times just acknowledging, you know, those folks in your organization who have continued to place orders. Just thank you for your loyalty. Um, I just would love to serve you with, um, texts and emails or however you want to, you know, whatever is best for you, letting them know you want to serve them. And are you interested in this content? You're going to have some people that opt out and that's okay. Because you know, when you really focus on the people who are wanting your content and who are wanting to hear from you, you will get so much more life back into your business. I think it's always easy for us to focus on the people who feel like they don't want us anymore. Um, and they, you know, are like, peace out. Yeah, Rhonda, I don't, I don't want anything from oils anymore. But the more we can shift our focus to the people who are excited, who do love you, who want to be nurtured by you, you'll kind of get that fresh wind in your sails to move forward and to just, you know, it, it's okay, you know, we can still serve those people. But to focus on the people who want to hear from you, um, with good content and, and that will help you kind of get restarted again.
Absolutely. And that's, that's what we've been trying to, and again, it's trying to get the right words to not come across as salesy and needy. Saying, how do you want to receive the content is the big thing too. Cause we just sort of, you know, sending everything by email and then we try and do a text campaign. And we do have people fall off understandably don't want those texts, but it's, it's needing to, um, send out something to our members to say, how do you want to receive your information?
Yeah. And I think that's really, that's good. I think just asking questions is always a good thing. Asking their opinion, asking, hey, how can we serve you best? Um, helps them to feel like you are being authentic versus just being salesy. So, so it sounds like you're doing a good job. You're doing the right things.
Just need to get going again.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Yeah. Plug back in and just, you know, pick, pick one thing to focus on at a time, specifically with Get Oiling. And, and I'll certainly happy to bring anyone else out who'd like to chat as well, but, and, and Rhonda, this could be the case for you. You know, I, I pick one problem, right? If the problem is, I am not communicating regularly with my people, then solve that one first, right? And, and it's a very easy way to solve it, like we're talking about here today, is to use content that's pre-made. That engages, that's really expertly written for the purpose that you're looking for. And then you can have that piece taken care of. And now you can think about, okay, well, now I want to start hosting events. And now you can dig into that area of Get Oiling and that kind of thing. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Fabulous. Well, we're really happy to see you back at Engage and you are welcome to come out and chat with us anytime on one of our live calls.
Thank you.
Absolutely. All right. Mary Lou, I'm going to bring you out real quick, if you're still here. Uh, let's see, it looks like I would need to promote you to a panelist for you to talk. So I'm going to do that real quick. It might make you pop off and come right back. So hold tight, Mary Lou. We'll talk to you in a second. Um, all right. Let me see. Here we go. Hi, how are you? Looks like you're muted.
I'm muted. There we go.
Perfect.
I'm well, thank you. Have been in Young Living since 2016 and, and have been, what is Eric Worrey call, call it? I, I am, you know, I, I'm a tourist.
Okay.
You know Eric.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, yeah, I, I haven't, you know, really, I, I have 10 people on my, in my team and it's just myself, my husband and one other person who does the essential rewards. I can't get people totally engaged. And I, I do try to send out emails. I do the sways. But I haven't joined Get Oiling. I, I guess I'm cheap in that respect because it's like, how much more do I pay to get going on this kind of stuff? So.
Right. Yeah. So what, what I would recommend is, I mean, we have, obviously it's the first, a dollar for your first month if you're at basic and higher. But if you are, you know, at a place where you're still kind of figuring out how you want to be operating moving forward, and you're not 100% on how you would use all of our features, we have like, you know, a seed or starter plan, both of which are, I want to say, isn't it like six or $7 and like, that's the very first one. And just get started using a contact manager. You know, we are a relationship business.
Kick me in the butt, please.
Yeah, just get, get the plan that's most comfortable for you to sustain for now, for where your business is. But like the most important thing you can start doing is use the contact manager because it's a people business. And we got to be talking to a lot of people and you can be at our $6 a month plan and use the Engagement Source too, if you wanted to have her write emails for you.
Well, and I, you know, I, I copy and paste an awful lot because, you know, there's some other people that I follow and I steal their, their stuff and, and whatnot. And I just figure in my, in my own personal emails, I may not have to be so compliant. With how it said, I, I suppose. And I'm very good about, you know, seeing people at the drugstore or the grocery store and, you know, I, I do try to do that. It's, it's getting online that, you know, I, I am not a Facebook person by any means and trying to engage people, I can engage people that I don't know face to face, not on the computer. So.
Cool. Well, I mean, either way, however you want to meet people, having a place where you are keeping up with when you spoke with them so that you do know when it's time to follow up, right? Because it's, it's really easy, actually, especially in the beginning to kind of lack mindset will do this to us. And we all struggle with it at all levels of, of, of growth. But, but it creeps in and it kind of gets us fixated on like how you want to, you want this one person to just sign up already, right? Like, oh my God, they, they, this would be so good for them. This is so obvious, right? If you are increasing the volume of people that you're talking to and you're using your contact manager to give yourself a to-do to, nope, don't reach out to that person about this tomorrow. No, you're going to do that in three days. And do it when it says to, because you, like, you're basically creating those buffers for yourself and expanding the ability, the ability for you to reach more people and be more effective. And again, you could do that at our like six, $7 a month plan level.
Right.
And like, that's, it's a great place to start if that's, if that's where you're at.
So much.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for coming out and we look forward to having you as part of our community. All right. I also have, let's see, was there, anyone else who wanted to be on? I thought there was somebody else. Please let me know in the Q and A. Or raise your hand if you did want to come out and chat with us about sort of next steps. Would be, would be happy to do that. I think Melissa, there you are. I'm going to pull you out. I thought it, sorry about that. Maybe you left. Okay. Well, Melissa, if you are here, if you show back up, raise your hand and we can chat. Okay, back to the Q and A. Allison says, I'd like to add a short two to three minute video to my initial welcome email to customers. That's a great idea. How can I do that? I seem to remember a picture of the video linked to the video on YouTube and another training. So, hmm. There's a couple of ways you can do this. Video cannot appear in email, right? But you can take a screen grab, screenshot of the video, like it's going to be played and put that image into your email. And that's a really great way to make email that is linking to video more engaging. People like to click things that look like buttons. Or click things that press play. We are still the, you know, the same four-year-old that wanted to press the buttons, right? In our mind. And so if you create something that does that, then, then that is going to get more views than if you had just put a link there. And the way that you do that is, and this would be my recommendation, you want to keep people on your site as much as possible. And, and so that's like, you know, if you have a video that was for leads, have that on a blog post. If it's a video that's for your people, you could have it on an unpublished page or not unpublished, but like, you know, it's, it's a viewable by link only page, right? That's what, how I would do it. But if you're not quite ready, or if you don't have enough pages in your account or whatever, then yes, by all means, grab the YouTube link, take a screen grab of the YouTube video, put that image into your email and then link the image. When you click the image, there's actually a little thing to, to add a link and just send it off to YouTube or to the page on your site where you have it embedded. Okay. I think, yes, unlisted is correct, Allison. Yeah, it's wrong verbiage. It should be published or it won't be viewable. But yeah, awesome. I'm excited to see what you do with that. Lot of excitement here, you guys in the, in the chat for getting started with the Engagement Source and getting some more great content to share with your customers. Christina, anything else you want to add before we go?
I don't think so. Just, I'm just so excited to be here and just thank you so much for having me on today.
Okay, fantastic. Well, we are honored to have you as a part of our partner community and a part of the broader Get Oiling community. You guys make sure that you check out the Engagement Source. You guys have a Facebook community as well, right?
We do, and it's open to anyone. It's not private, just for members. So you can just find that at YL Business Source is our Facebook community.
Fantastic. I think you have that linked on your homepage as well.
I do, I do. Yep.
So either way, go get started. It's $15 a month. You can do it once. You don't have to do it forever. You can do it once, fall in love with it and definitely do it forever, like a lot of people do. And, and then of course, if you want to just go hop over to their Team YL Facebook group, you'll find a lot of great people in there. An amazing community, just like we have in ours. So thank you guys so much for being a part of this community. Oh, here's a really good question. Camelia asked, what does the newsletter look like? Is it possible?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, sure. Well, I was going to say, Camelia, I will drop my contact information. I actually created a freebie yesterday. So if you'd like to actually get that freebie, let me just drop, just shoot me a text, guys, at, I'm going to drop my phone number into the chat. Copy and paste my text number and just shoot me a text today and I'll send you over that resource bundle so you can give it a try this month.
There we go. There we go. All right. Fantastic. And I will, for the replay, if you guys want to find it, be on the lookout for the number. I'll actually list it there. Does it matter what they text? Just, just send a text.
Yeah, just shoot me a text and say, hey, I'm from the Get Oiling call. And that's my personal two-way text number. So just shoot my text and I'll send you that link.
All right. Sounds good. All right, you guys, we will see you back next week. Next week, we actually have, Camelia, it's in the chat. Go open up the chat and you'll see that there is a number there Greg has posted. Okay. And what was I going to say? Oh yeah, next week, we have a very special guest trainer coming next week as well to talk about how you can add more dollars to your bottom line with dialed-in branding. Really excited to have Tiffany Armstrong with us next week. I'll be out at a family reunion and I will see you guys back for convention week. We love you and we cannot wait to see you again. If you're going to be there in person, please come see us at Aroma Sharing and we're so excited to see you and hug you if you're a hugger. Yeah. So anyway, you guys have a great week and we'll talk soon. Bye.
Bye.
Bye.